All right, good evening, everyone. We'll call this regular meeting of the mayor and council to order. I show the time is 6:33 PM. Roll call, all council members are present with the exception of council member Price. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Boyd, will you do an invocation, please?
Lord Jesus, we thank you so much, Lord, for just bringing us here today, Lord, to be able to do city business. And, Lord, we thank you for the rain yet again, and we ask you to stop, please. But, Lord, we thank you for just the opportunity to be able to be here tonight. And, Lord, I pray that you would be with every decision that has to be made, Lord, that you would give us wisdom and guidance on what is best for the citizens here in Social Circle. We love you, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I've got several announcements to make. All of these will be in our community room here with the, unless there's an exception on one, and I'll state that. Got the council meeting tonight, municipal court, June 18 at 1 PM. GMA convention in Savannah for most of the council members. That's June 19 through the 24th. Planning commission meets June 24 at 6 PM. Our next council work session is July 3 at 6:30 PM. Main Street Commission meeting, July 8, 8 AM. Historic preservation meeting, July 8 at 6 PM. Social Circle Development Authority meeting is July 10 at 3 PM in the City Hall Conference Room. And our next council meeting, July 15 at 6:30 PM. All right, that brings us to presentations. Employee introduction and recognition. Okay. Downtown rundown. Amber is not here.
She's at that convention.
Okay. All right, we have on the agenda swearing in of municipal court judges. I just learned that the judges in Alabama, so I don't think he's going to make it tonight. Citizen requests, we don't have any council, do we have any council requests? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to either amend or approve the agenda.
So, Mayor, at the work session, we actually discussed a bid award for the Wildwood Drive Regional Sewer Project. And it was a two-phase bid award. And there was a clerical error in that it did not get put on the agenda. It actually moved over to a non-city council agenda. And we caught it this morning after the agenda was already posted. And so we recommend that we add two items to new business under thirteen and fourteen. We have a bid award for Wildwood Drive Regional Sewer Project Phase One for the Forest Man and Gravity Sewer to A and Construction Incorporated for $1,782,535.2. Then item number 14 will be the bid award for Wildwood Drive Regional Sewer Project Phase Two, the Pump Station Installation and Demolitions to JDS Incorporated for $947,809. Those will be under thirteen and fourteen of new business.
Okay. We have recommended approval by our city manager. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with amendments.
Second. Motion from Stephen, a second from Nathan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, we do have a, looks like three public hearings tonight. Before we start those, I want to read the rules for our public hearings. We have three public hearings as I stated tonight. As the agenda item is brought forth, city staff will present the application. A public hearing will be opened, then the applicant will give their presentation, and they'll have 10 minutes total to do that. Then anyone registered to speak in favor of the application will be called to the podium, give their name and address, and are limited to 10 minutes total, not each. Then anyone registered to speak against the application will be called to the podium, give their name and address, and be limited to 10 minutes total, not each. Once the applicant has been given an opportunity for rebuttal with any time remaining, the public hearing will close, and the matter will come before council for a vote. Our first public hearing tonight, variance 2025-002. Ms. Davis, will you give us a staff report?
Yes. So this variance is from Section 3.1.2.8.2 of the city's UDC to allow for the construction of a single-family detached home with a minimum heated square footage of 1,200 square feet. This applicant has requested that variance in order to build a single-family detached home. This variance request is also being done in conjunction with the rezone further down the agenda at 304 Cedar Street, also from residential medium density to R-15. The applicant's proposal is to construct that home under the R-15 zoning to be more compatible with the other homes on similar-sized lots within this area. The property is located within the historic Mill District, and the average heated square footage of homes in this area is roughly 1,000 square feet, according to Q Public. While the property itself is considered to be non-conforming in terms of dimensional requirements, the calculation for dimensional requirements under Section 3.1.2. B of the UDC for single-family detached uses on deficient lots of records does not pertain to lessening the square footage for those uses. Therefore, variance approval is the only means to allow for a lesser minimum heated square footage. Also, given that this property is located within the city's historic district, if this does get approved, the applicant will still be required to apply for a COA or Certificate of Appropriateness reviewed by the HPC prior to obtaining permits. The planning commission did hear this request at their last meeting, and they recommended approval of the request for variance to allow for the construction with a minimum heated square foot of 1,200 square feet with a vote of three to one. Staff also recommends approval of the square footage being allowed to be reduced to 1,200 square feet.
Any questions for Ashley? All right, this time I'll open a public hearing and invite the applicant up to speak. And Trent, you have 10 minutes total.
Awesome. Thank y'all for your time tonight. Trent Steinhour, 3628 Mount Perrin Church Road. Like Ashley said, looking to rezone from RMD to R-15, also with the variance to go down to 1,200 square foot. I think this will give a house that fits appropriate in the Mill District. It'll have three bedrooms and two baths. Will fit all the historic, you know, district from the COA when presented to that. But, you know, that's the basics here to answer any questions that you might have. The, I'm estimating a sales price under 300, maybe 275 to 284. We did a project down the street that sold for 245. But I think in that 260 to 280 range will be a good sales price in that community. This is one of three lots that we have in there. The other two were rezoned a few years ago, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, for the same R-15 with that square footage. So the goal is to build three homes very similar right there and kind of keep helping that community develop and try to get some families in there.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Steinhour? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call on anyone that was signed up to speak for this application. And Mr. Steinhour, you, I'm assuming you don't want to comment on what you just said?
Yeah, I just signed in.
Okay. No one signed up to speak against. So I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a vote.
I make a motion to accept the planning center's, planning center's, planning commission's recommendation to approve the variance.
Second. All right, we need to have a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, next up, we have variance 2025-003. Ashley?
This is a variance request from Section 9.2.1.8.6 of the city's UDC to allow for 750 linear feet of roadway prior to installing a turnaround or cul-de-sac rather than the requirement of 250 feet as outlined in the UDC. So as you can see on your screens there, or it's also in your packets in paper form, the image on the right side of the screen there shows what Phase Two of Westland Park would look like if we did every 250 feet before you install a turnaround. And then the image on the left there shows the proposed 750 feet before you have to install a turnaround. And the main reason for the request for this variance is because these lots are all on septic. So if you start installing turnarounds every 250 feet, you're eating up quite a bit of lot frontage and potential use for those lots. So this variance would be applicable to Phase Two of the Westland Park subdivision, currently being developed at Alcova Drive. This part of the subdivision would consist of about 48 single-family lots. And as I mentioned before, since they're on septic, they do have to have a lot width of 100 feet. So that would require a turnaround every 2.5 lots. So every third lot, you're, you got a cul-de-sac, basically. The International Fire Code only requires developers to have a maximum of 750 feet between cul-de-sacs for roads 26 feet in width. Per Section 9.2.1 of the UDC, the developer would still be required to install roadways with a width of 26 feet on the inside of curbs, so face of curb to face of curb. Staff recommends approval of the request for variance from Section 9.2.1.8.6 of the UDC to allow for 750 linear feet of roadway prior to installing required turnarounds and cul-de-sacs. And planning commission also unanimously recommended approval.
Okay. Questions for Ashley? All right, I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak.
Thank you very much. My name is Ned Butler, representing Reliant Homes, address 574 Conyers Road, Loganville, Georgia. As Ashley explained, and you can see on the picture, when we purchased this property, I think the code at that time was every 1,200 feet you had to have a turnaround. So when we did Phase One, we installed one of these turnarounds as you entered the subdivision on the left. As we got to looking at Phase Two with the newly adopted code, that's when we discovered this. And with the width of the property, I understand if you've got a sewer neighborhood with smaller lots and it's wider where you've got more cross-sections. But with, we're going to be 300 feet deep with a 100-foot wide lot to make it work for environmental health. And we're only 700 feet wide until we get to the back. And then once we get there, you see there's a creek running through it. So it's really hard to make a cross-section subdivision with lots of interconnectivity. So that is why we are making the request, and we researched with the fire code and saw the 750. So that's why we requested that limit. And I will entertain any questions or reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you, Ned. All right, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Teresa and a second from Steve. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, which brings us to the last public hearing, which is a rezon 2025-007.
Okay, so this rezon is for the property at 304 Cedar Street for the purpose of rezoning from RMD to R-15 in order to construct a single-family detached home. And as you can see on the exhibit, including your packets and on the screen here, the zoning map, directly across the street, we did rezon two lots to R-15 when we did that citywide initiate, or the city initiated rezon with property owner's permission. So those did get rezoned within that, and I believe that the applicant has recently purchased this property, and so they have to come back through this process in order to develop. So there is water and sewer availability in the area as well as gas availability. Since, and like we mentioned before, you know, they would have to go back before HPC in order to construct the home. So staff recommends approval of this rezon, and the planning commission also unanimously recommended approval. And it is in line with the comprehensive plan as well.
Questions for Ashley? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to give a presentation. Trent?
Hey, Trent Steinhour, 3628 Mount Perrin. Same property we spoke about just a minute ago. Seeking rezon from RMD to R-15, build a single-family detached home. Fits the character area of the Mill District. Any questions I can answer?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak against, please come forward. Seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Make a motion to accept it?
Say it.
Okay, we've got a motion from Steve and a second from Teresa. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, consented in agenda, Mr. Taylor.
So we have seven items on the consent agenda this evening. We have the minutes of the mayor and council regular meeting from May the 20th. We have the executive session minutes from May the 20th. We have the minutes of the mayor and council call meeting from May the 28th. We have an executive session minutes from May the 28th. We have the minutes of the mayor and council work session that was out on June 5, 2025, as well as the executive session minutes on June 5, 2025. We also have an approval to surplus the 2013 Sutphen Guardian Fire Engine and authorized sale via Brindle Mountain Fire Apparatus. Recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay. Motion from Nathan and a second from Teresa. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have no unfinished business under new business. The first item is a resolution to adopt the 2025-2026 annual budget.
Hello, good evening. So the budget that is before you for adoption is the same that we have discussed previously, except for the changes that were discussed at the last meeting about the library. So that change is reflected within the budget in front of you. The FY26 recommended budget is for adoption general fund, $8,334,929. Confiscated fund, $30,000. ARPA fund, $1,365,377. Hotel motel, $500. SLOSS fund, $2,199,851. Water fund, $5,565,927. Gas, $5,889,235. And then your solid waste, $544,556 for a total FY26 budget of $23,930,375. Any questions?
All right, I'll entertain a motion for the, my signature, mayor's signature on the resolution.
Make a motion to approve the budget, ready motion?
Second. Motion from Teresa and a second from Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, he's got the next one. Authorization to transmit proposed comprehensive plan amendment to DCA.
So all we're looking for on this item is the authorization to have the mayor sign a letter of transmittal to get the drafted comprehensive plan to DCA so they can begin their 40-day review process. And then they'll send it back to us, tell us it's all good, and then we'll adopt at that point.
Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it was Steve with the motion. Is that you, Tyson?
Yes.
A second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three.
Okay, this is for the 2025 galvanized line replacement and master meter installation. We received five bids. Matthew Developments was the lowest bid at $62,450. And the highest bid was Mid-South Builders at $139,000. Matthew Development, we have worked with them before, and they've demonstrated they have the experience and technical expertise and capability to successfully complete this project. So city staff and precision planning recommend this contractor, to approve this contractor in the amount of $62,450 and authorize the city manager, Eric Taylor, to sign the contract.
Entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Steve and a second from Tyson. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the next item that I have is to, we sent out, is the asphalt overlay for East and West High Tower in Clark Street, which we're going to defer until we do a drainage project. Staff with the help of Precision Planning sent out a request for bids, and we received several bids. We had 11 in all. Triple R paving and construction out Fayetteville was the lowest bidder in the amount of $248,644.34. East Coast grading came in second at $265,815. Staff was able to verify some of the references for triple R paving, and both of them came back that they were really good. One of them was with the city of Union City. Marie McDonald verified that they had over $500,000 paving contract, and it was for a subdivision. And they also submitted a list of their equipment. So they do have the equipment to complete the job. Staff recommends that mayor and council approve awarding the contract to Triple R paving and construction the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $248,644.34. And allow the city manager to sign the contract.
Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
I feel like I'm having to drag those out of you guys. All right, we have a motion from Steve and a second from Nathan. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, I believe that's roof replacement instead of rude replacement.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is for roof replacement for the buildings that the city has acquired at 120, 124, 136 South Cherokee. Scope of work includes roof demolition down to the existing roof deck, bringing the roofs up to current energy code with a new R25 roof system. There will be new internal roof drains with overflows at 120 and 124 South Cherokee. And with new tapered insulation to be used to slope the roof drains. With all existing skylights to be removed. We did go out to bid, had a competitive bid process. There was one sole bidder, Colony Roofers, in the amount of $339,505. And CPL reviewed their submission and has reported positive feedback. And so we're therefore recommending that we award the bid to Colony Roofers in the amount of $339,505.
Eric, do you have any idea when they might start that?
It's fairly quickly.
Okay. Okay, Chair, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Colony Roofers.
Say it.
Okay, we have a motion from Nathan and a second from Teresa. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item number six.
Item number six is approval of the industrial natural gas agreement with Isanova Technologies. Isanova has a, and for the last, I think, seven years, has had a special rate for their RTO oxidizer that helps with some of the smell over there. And when we redid the gas and water sewer rates, this was one of the items that we had to cancel that contract and renegotiate the rates with them under the, under the rates that were recommended as part of the utility study. And so we have worked out the agreement with them and recommending moving ahead with this so that their rate's going to affect on July the 1.
Okay. All in, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Say it.
Okay, we've got a motion from Tyson and a second from Teresa. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, Eric, is that you?
So, item number seven, ordinance amending Section 3.2 of the city code of ordinances titled library fund restrictions. We met with the library board about how the money that's in the, what's known as the Walthire Trust Fund, the funds that were set aside by the Walthire Sisters several years ago.
Stanton Sisters.
Stanton Sisters, yeah. What?
Six is Isanova.
We were just, we just did Isanova.
Okay. I just heard six, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I misquoted.
Yeah, for the Stanton Sisters. And just recommending a minor tweak to the Section 3.2 of the code concerning library fund restrictions to indicate that the funds can be used for utility purposes.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion from Teresa and a second from Steve. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight.
So item eight is approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the Azalea Regional Library System. This is an agreement that we've been working with their attorney on concerning how the city and the library work together in terms of how the funds are utilized and what the city's support is financially for this coming year. We are satisfied, and we're ready to move ahead with signing it. So recommend approval.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Steve and a second from Nathan. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So item numbers nine through 11, we're going to do one presentation since they're all connected, and Tony Joe will give that presentation.
So the first is to purchase the three police vehicles from Duval Ford for the total amount of $119,700. I know we've talked about that before, that we got that deal so we could get three. And then the second part of that is to award the contract to equip those three police vehicles to Utilitac. We have two quotes, one from Dana Safety and one from Utilitac, with Utilitac coming in at the lower rate at $64,427.49. And then lastly is the approval to finance the purchase of those police vehicles and equipments with GMA in the amount of $180,000 with that difference of $4,427.49 coming from confiscated funds. The GMA is at 500,000. The GMA is at five years at four, four point six nine percent. That was a better interest rate than the three years at four point eight percent, and it provides for an annual payment of forty-one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-three cents. That actual transaction will happen in the next fiscal year, but since this was the last council meeting before that, we wanted to go ahead and get it here, and by doing that, we'll make sure that we don't have a debt payment until the next, next fiscal year. Any questions?
All right, Chair, entertain a motion on items nine, ten, and eleven.
We need to do them separately.
You've got to take them separately.
Yes.
All right.
I make a motion to accept item nine.
Second.
No.
Okay. Have a motion from Steve and a second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I make a motion to accept the, number ten, the contract to equip the vehicles.
Say it.
Okay. Motion from Nathan and a second from Teresa. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven.
I'll make a motion to, to accept approval of the finances through GMA.
Second.
Second. Okay, got a motion from Tyson, I'll take the second from Nathan. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, item twelve.
Item twelve is an approval of the ordinance to modify section eight point three of the city code of ordinance governing speed limits on city streets and roadways for speed detection recertification, and Chief Guest will provide a little bit more information on this item.
We have to redo our speed device certification that requires certain things, our FCC license, things of that nature. One of that requires the city council pass another binding ordinance, and we have since updated that paperwork to include streets that weren't previously allowed on it, like Clover Drive and things in Azalea Farms and stuff. Anything that we found that had the requisite to be put on the radar plat, put it on there. And we also addressed some of the speed limits that were, we were talking about out on Thermabacus as well. So, we've updated everything in our ordinance for you to review and approve to include the consideration of how we wanted to run the speed enforcement cameras for the school zone safety, whether or not we wanted to do one of two things, whether we wanted to just break it up to where we just do two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, or whether we wanted to run it all day like we do over at the middle school and high school, and that's really where we left it at last time.
Any questions for Jason?
So, do we need to make a decision tonight on that?
So, actually, that decision was already made at the work session.
And that was to keep it all day?
Yeah, it was to keep, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this item is strictly for the streets and for the recertification of the radar.
Okay.
Sorry about that. It all kind of ran together.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I believe we added item thirteen for Wildwood Drive Pump Station.
Yes, so item number thirteen is a bid award to Wildwood Drive, for the Wildwood Drive Regional Sewer Project, Phase One, Force Man and Gravity Sewer to A M Construction Incorporated for one million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and two cents. Anything to add?
No, this got two divisions, so the first division was the A and M Construction, and they're a pretty good construction company, so Turnip Seed Engineers was real pleased with it, so they recommended it.
Take the recommendation of Turnip Seeds.
Second.
Okay, motion from Steve and a second from Nathan. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And item number fourteen is also with the same project. This is for the Phase Two part of, it was just for the pump station installation and demolitions of the existing pump stations, and that's going to be going to JDS Incorporated for nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars, a little bidder.
This is dilemma, to delent, to demolish both of them.
Yes.
Going away with.
Railroad and Edmondson.
Yes, and this is a, a project funded by GFO, so it does have to have a resolution.
Make a motion to accept Turnip Seeds.
Say it.
Okay, we have a motion from Steve and a second from Teresa. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I believe that's all we have for our regular meeting. We do have a need for an executive session for potential discussion of real estate litigation or personnel. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion from Tyson and a second from Nathan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all.